Morning, everybody. I'm obviously feeling very good. How are you all? Welcome to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. I'm Ryan Dorsey, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 3rd District. Today, the Committee will hear five bills. I'll announce them as we get to them. They've all been announced for 10 o'clock today. It's 10:02, so we're ready to rock and roll. In attendance here, we have Council Vice President, Vice Chair of the Committee, and Representative of the 6th District, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have Councilmember Zach Blanchard from the 11th District. To her left. To his left, we have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my far right, we have Councilmember Paris Gray from the 8th District. To his left, we have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District.
You're welcome.
And we have various representatives from the Mayor's Office, perhaps from the Council President's Office, certainly from the Comptroller's Office, city agencies, and we have, from the Office of Council Services, our committee staff member here, Julianne Jamot. How are you doing this morning? I'm great. We have five bills. And the first that we will hear is Council Bill 25-0069, "Sale of Property, 1820 North Charles Street." And as I think I said just before we started here in the chamber, I could not be happier to see this property being sold. Kim Clark is here pumping her fists. Do we have... This was put forth at the request of the Baltimore Development Corporation. Does BDC want to give a couple of opening thoughts here? On the right, it turns red. There you go.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee. My name is Kim Clark. I'm the Executive Vice President with Baltimore Development Corporation. This property comes before you with a long history. Way back when, before many of you were born, through the use of urban renewal, the city acquired this property, and it was integrated into the Parkway Theater property. And while the theater itself got redeveloped, this property never did. So a few years ago, we took the property back to examine and see what we could do with it. And we've had a couple of small developers come forward that are interested in redeveloping the property, making it useful again in a fashion that integrates itself into the Arts and Entertainment District, as well as the Charles North area itself. So because there is no urban renewal plan, we have to do a sales ordinance to be able to dispose of the property once again. So here we are. Once the bill is approved, we hope to issue an RFP. And fingers crossed, those two folks that are interested will apply with hopefully many others.
I have a couple of questions about this, actually. We've had a couple... This is a distinctive building. Not including even the trees growing out the second-floor windows. We have had some properties that we did land disposition, we did property disposition for, that maybe had some sort of like, "Oops, it fell down" kind of demolition by accident, neglect, or whatever.
Right.
This is a distinctive building. Is this in a historically protected area? And is there any possibility that somebody takes this property and demolishes the existing structure?
That would not be the intent of the RFP. It's not, I don't think, in an historic district. But we have taken steps to try to preserve the building. We've also had a structural analysis on the building. So once we get a roof on it, it'll be good, we believe.
Okay. Any other questions from the Committee for Kim? Do you want to say it for the record? Give the BDC report here?
Pardon me?
You want to give the BDC report for the record? It says that you report favorable on the bill.
And we report favorable on the bill and look forward to its hopeful passage.
Great. Thank you. We'll go to the... Did you have a question? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For Kim... Yeah, yeah. I, too, am really excited about this. In my previous job, I worked for Midtown Community Benefits District, who, you know, is in this area as well. So I also know the property, its potential, and the trees growing through the roof. The small vacant parking lot right on the south side of that, is that also city-owned?
No. So the building in question is the one immediately adjacent to the Parkway. And then there's another building that has somewhat recent ownership, and that property owner, I believe, owns the parking lot.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Planning?
Planning recommends favorable.
Great. Finance? We didn't have a report. Finance?
Finance reports this is favorable. Once this property is put out for an RFP, it'll then be redeveloped and lead to... Help further private redevelopment efforts in the Station North and Entertainment District, and help revitalize a key commercial carter, promote job creation, and increase tax revenue for the city, as well as make a beautiful building look a little nicer.
Great. Thanks. Department of Real Estate?
Good morning. My name is Jay Hardy, and I'm from the Office of the Comptroller, representing the Department of Real Estate. We support the passage of this bill, and we stand behind the bill report we submitted.
Great. Thank you. DHCD?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee. Stephanie Murdock for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. I don't think we actually got a bill report. It says in our packet that we didn't have one.
It's not in the packet.
Okay.
It was submitted. I can send it over to the Committee.
Okay. Good to have it on the record. Thank you. Great. That's all our Agencies. Any further questions? Do we have any public testimony? No public testimony? Great. Would somebody care to move the bill favorable?
Move.
The bill's been moved favorable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstain? Great. This bill will move on to second reader at the next council meeting with a favorable Next bill, 25-0070, "Sale of Property, 242 South Patterson Park Avenue." This bill is introduced by the Council President on behalf of the Office of the Comptroller. Jay, would you like to tell us about this property? Kick us off?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Council. Once again, my name is Jay Hardy, and I'm from the Office of the Comptroller, representing the Department of Real Estate. I'm also joined by the Director of the Department of Real Estate, Eric Evans, here. I'm here today in support of City Council Bill 25-0070. Our office supports this bill with one technical amendment, however. This property includes a two-story building and a playground area on about 11,000 square feet of land. St. Vincent de Paul of Baltimore has operated a Head Start program at this location for over 20 years, along with a summer camp and other services for children and families. Following the approval of this ordinance by the Council, the Department of Real Estate will work with St. Vincent de Paul to negotiate terms and the purchase price, subject to the approval of the Board of Estimates. Our office is in support of this action because it ensures a reliable nonprofit partner's productive use of city-owned property and helps the city's goal of supporting consistent community-based services. There is one minor technical amendment to correct the address from 242 to 238 South Patterson Park Avenue. And for the reasons stated above, the Department of Real Estate supports the passage of this bill, and we're open to any questions.
Great. Thanks. Committee members, you all see the amendments on the backside of the bill text in your packet. Just one little brief, two-line amendment. Great. Thanks. Any questions for the Comptroller's Office?
Mr. General.
Please. Madam Vice Chair?
Eric probably knows I'm going to ask this. St. Vincent de Paul also has the same type of facility on Park Heights Avenue. Any update of where that stands? Because this is the same thing, basically, but we know that last conversation.
It is. You're correct. You're correct. Good morning, Madam Vice President and members of the Board, Eric Evans, Department of Real Estate. So in answer to your question, that, at the moment, St. Vincent de Paul, I believe, is having meetings with community representatives surrounding other development that they're doing in the community. And at the moment, that acquisition is on hold for the moment.
Okay. The meetings are through Park Heights Renaissance.
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe that...
Thank you.
I think they're pending.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Great. Councilman Parker?
Not a question, but just, Councilperson for the 4th District. I'm very familiar with the facility and somebody with a deep background in early childhood education. Really grateful for the great work of St. Vincent de Paul, both in operating the Head Start out of this facility, as well as for Camp St. Vincent, which really provides an excellent summer camp experience going back more than 100 years, I think, at this point, for students, young people experiencing homelessness, and they operate that Patterson Park. I really appreciate... I want to note the good stewardship of St. Vincent de Paul of the city-owned property for many years. It's in good shape. They've taken good care of it, and I'm excited to see them do even more of that with their ownership. I also want to note appreciation for the stability that this gives to the program, even though the city has been a great partner. Having them have ownership of it just makes sure that we maintain access to affordable early childhood education in the portion of the city where real estate like this is really hard to find and to use for nonprofit, community-interested, community-supporting purposes like a Head Start. I'm particularly mindful of that because St. Vincent de Paul operates another Head Start location in the 1st District, while just in the former 1st District, just outside it now in the 2nd, at Our Lady of Fatima School in the Bayview community. And because of changes to the lease there and the charter schools taking the space, they lost access to that space. And trying to help them find another location anywhere nearby that could serve the rapidly growing, especially immigrant population, of children in that community was difficult to almost impossible. And so really grateful that this allows St. Vincent de Paul to lock in and build on their long-term commitment in a stable way. I'm really hopeful that there's other opportunities for them to do that across the city so that we're not priced out of providing these key services to important communities.
Cool. Thank you. All right. We'll go to Agencies. Planning?
Planning recommends favorable.
Finance?
We stand by our report and does not oppose, and look forward to answering any questions.
Department of Real Estate. You are favorable with amendment. You presented the bill. Thank you.
Yes, correct.
Great. Housing, Community Development?
Thank you, Stephanie Murdock for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. Committee members, any further questions for any of these Agencies? We have been joined by Councilmember Bullock from the 9th District. How are you doing this morning, Doc? Okay. Do we have any public testimony on this bill? There is no public testimony to be given on this bill by anybody. We have an amendment. I will move the amendment on behalf of the Comptroller's Office. The Amendment Number 1, which is on the back of the bill text, is on Page 1 in Line 2, Strike 242, and substitute 238, and on the same page in Lines 4 and 15, in each instance, Strike 242 and substitute 238. I move the amendment. All in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Great. The amendment is voted favorable. I move the bill favorable as amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Great. The bill is voted favorable with amendment and will be recommended as such to the Council on second reader at the next City Council meeting. Councilwoman Porter, you want to take the floor? You going to present the bill? Okay. Great. We have... Next bill, 25-0074, "Repeal of Ordinance 06222, Planned Unit Development, 1100 Wycomico Street." I love repeal of a PUD. Repealing PUDs is so great. It means that we've changed our zoning laws over time to make these special exceptions obsolete, that we are improving in order to...
Do you want me to present? Do you want me to present the bill?
I would love for you to present.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's somebody else on the applicant's behalf that you want to present it. I'd love to have some... Councilwoman Porter, sponsor of the bill. How are you doing this morning?
Thank you. So, good morning, everyone. This is, as the Chair just mentioned, this is a repeal of a PUD planned unit development for 1100 Wycomico Street. We received a favorable letter of support from Community Association, Citizens of Pig Town, and also Carol Camden Association. And these particular developers have been working with my office pretty closely for the last year. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does the Committee have any questions for Councilwoman Porter? No questions for the sponsor of the bill? Great. Thank you. We will go right to the Agency Reports, which is moving along here. Is the Law Department present? Yes, Law Department is present. Yes, thank you.
Good morning. Desiree Lucky, on behalf of the City Solicitor. The Law Department approves this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Great. Thank you. I just was noticing, I guess, these other sale-of-property bills, these are not something that we refer to the Law Department for. It's so unusual. I like the only thing that we don't refer to law, so far as I know. Okay, great. Planning Commission?
Good morning. Interestingly, I staffed this when the PUD was created in 2006. So the purpose of it, as you pointed out, was to solve a zoning problem, because I believe there were four land uses that they wanted, but the property was owned M22 Industrial at the time. So to fix that and create a mixed use and leaning towards commercial, they created the PUD for that purpose. After the comprehensive citywide rezoning of the city, that's no longer necessary since underlying zoning provides all the uses that they need, and so it can be repealed, and the Planning Commission recommends favorably.
What is the zoning of the property now?
It's IMU 1, I believe.
Okay, got it. Cool. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock for DHCD. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Great. We've got favorability all around. I'm just... Can I tell you I'm feeling good this morning? Do we have any public testimony on this bill? No public testimony? Any questions from any of the Committee members or any of the Agencies? There are no amendments to this bill. We're just repealing. I love it. Would you care to move the bill, sponsor?
Yes, I move the bill, sir.
The bill has been moved favorable. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Great. The bill is moved favorably and will be recommended as such to the full City Council at the next council meeting on second reader. Two left. Amtrak's in the House. Welcome. Bill Number 25-0078, "City Streets Closing, Portions of Certain Streets and Alley's Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Company, Amtrak." So this is the closing, and then we will also hear a sale of property after the closing of the streets. This bill is introduced by Councilmember Bullock. You want to take the floor? And actually, while I'm at it, so we don't have to bring you back up there twice, why don't I just announce this other bill, too, and you can tell us both about this? Councilmember Bullock, the sponsor of 25-0079, "Sale of Property, Certain Streets Lying Within the Area Bounded by Riggs Avenue, North Payson Street, West Lafayette Avenue, and the land of National Railroad Passenger Corporation," Amtrak is going to present both bills to us this morning. Councilmember Bullock, thank you for putting these in. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I'll be relatively brief, and probably the most expedient way to do this is to read the bill synopsis. So again, the Department of Transportation has requested this introduction at Amtrak's request. And again, the accompanying bill, as you mentioned, would allow Amtrak to consolidate these existing lots in the right-of-way between them. The land surrounding these portions is actually owned by Amtrak, and the streets actually form a dead end at the Amtrak property. And this is an important part of the project for the Frederick Douglass Tunnel. So just wanted to put this in front of you and hopefully get your support for this important project, not only for Baltimore, but for the Northeast Corridor.
Great. Thank you. And we also did receive a couple of slides from Amtrak's representatives.
And I think those are helpful, because you can see exactly what's going on in the area, how the proximity to the Amtrak property and the parcels, as well as the adjoining neighborhood. So again, I'm here for any questions. I know we also have representation from Amtrak as well.
Great. Thank you. And I also met with Amtrak's representatives a month or so ago. I know that I pulled up Google Street View or Google Maps, and I kind of was like, oh, what's around here that might be of concern to anybody? I did see Amosia like two blocks north of here, and was just asking, like, have you guys gone and spoken to the leadership there? And they said, "Yeah, we're totally, you know, communication with them, and this isn't going to impact them or any... No concerns there." So, you know, I'm happy. I think that Amtrak is doing a good outreach effort, and I think have made some special accommodations for some of the other folks in the area as well. So it seems like they're doing a really good job. Any other questions for the sponsor of the bill? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This was introduced by Councilmember Bullock on behalf of the Department, or at the request of the Department of Transportation, so we'll go to DOT next.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christian McNeil with DOT. Council Bill 25-0078. This bill closes off small dead-end streets that only lead to Amtrak property, so Amtrak can move forward with the Frederick Douglass Tunnel project. These streets aren't needed for public use, and closing them is an essential step to advancing a major federal investment that will improve rail service, reduce delays, and bring jobs and long-term economic benefits to Baltimore. And this is why DOT fully supports this bill.
Great. And do you want to speak to the other bill as well?
All right. Council Bill 25-0079. This bill authorizes the sale of unused city right-of-way, so Amtrak can move forward with the Frederick Douglass Tunnel project. These parcels don't serve any transportation purpose for the public, but transferring them is critical to advancing a once-in-a-generation federal investment. This tunnel will modernize rail infrastructure, again, reduce delays, and improve passenger mobility through Baltimore, while also bringing good-paying jobs as well. So again, this is why DOT fully supports this bill.
Thank you. For the closing of the streets, we have Planning Commission referred here, but we don't have a report from them.
Right. The Planning Commission wasn't able to get these scheduled yet, but I believe we can get the last bits of information that we need. And Tuesday, or sorry, Wednesday is our agenda-setting meeting for the September 18th Planning Commission meeting, where I think you can be handled at that time.
Okay, great. I thank you for the reminder. I did say that we would hear these bills because we wanted to schedule them, but knew that Planning Commission had not yet heard them. And so we're going to hold off on voting these bills today, but we're going to get the hearing done, and then whatever our next hearing is, whether it's an oversight hearing, or whether it's on policy-related bills, or whether it's on other land use, stuff like this, whatever our next convening is as a Committee, we will vote on those at that session. Yeah, we do have some things coming up. I'm going to go to public testimony on the city streets closing for 25-0078. Any public testimony on this? All right, great. So we've covered all the Agencies that this was referred to. Any other questions or comments from the Committee members for any Agencies regarding All right. Great. That concludes the hearing on that bill. To wrap things up with 25-0079, Department of Planning, this was referred to the Department of Planning, not the Planning Commission, for the sale of property, because those don't normally go to Planning Commission.
The street closings typically do go...
The street closings did. The sale of property does not, but it was referred to the Planning Department.
Okay. It's unusual to split the two, so we would normally prefer to follow the Planning Commission so we can get a corresponding answer at the same time.
Yeah. Obviously, we can't sell a property that is a city street that we haven't closed out already, anyway. Okay, great. Department of Finance?
The Department of Finance is supportive of this legislation. While a sale price has not been determined, any funds resulting from the sale would be deposited into the surplus property fund, which can be used to manage city property that is surplus, as well as cover real estate-related transactions. The ultimate completion of the Frederick Douglass Tunnel will have future financial implications, as the redevelopment helps to spark redevelopment in the area. It'll also bring a state-of-the-art tunnel with all-electric passenger trains, modernized rail infrastructure, and a new ADA-accessible West Baltimore Mark station, as well as improved travel times for Amtrak and Mark customers. And additionally, we're getting several new bridges throughout West Baltimore.
Great. Thank you. Department of Real Estate?
Our office stands behind our favorable report.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And we have a favorable report from the Department of Transportation. That covers all of our Agency Reports. Any questions for any Agencies about the sale of this property? And public testimony? Can Amtrak come tell us just like a little bit about what this particular site is for? Just informationally, because, one, this is parcel Group A. Am I correct that we're going to have parcel groups B, C, D, and however many others coming to us as subsequent bills, as well as this project progresses?
Yes. There will be more groups of bills coming through. We're trying to bundle them where it makes sense and where work is imminent. And here, work is imminent and actually going on today.
I'm sorry. I just jumped in here. Can you just tell us who you are, real quick?
I'm sorry. We've met. There's a lot of people here that haven't met me. My name's Leah Gatlin. I'm Amtrak's Director of Real Estate, and I'm residing over all of the real estate matters for the Frederick Douglass Tunnel program. And I have briefed the Committee members here individually, so I apologize for not letting you know who I am.
And so then this parcel group here and the project at this particular site is for what aspect of the bigger project?
This is an area that we call the South Approach, and this is where the Southern Ventilation Facility will be constructed and maintained. This is the actual mouth of the southern portion of the tunnel. And that is where there will be deep excavation going on in the coming months, and probably in... We're looking at probably in the spring. There is going to be a lot of also utility relocations. Utility relocations is the heart of the work in the Southern Approach at this time. And then a little bit further down, where we don't have any closures, they're doing work to rebuild the bridge at Mulberry Street at this time as well. There is a... There is a track shift, and so that has constituted the tracks moving over to the east. And so, that is where we have bought real estate, and in the, in between the real estate parcels that we've bought and purchased to accommodate the track shift, are streets and alleys that need to be purchased and closed, closed and purchased in order to complete the assemblage to accommodate the track shift in what would be part of the new Northeast Corridor.
Great. Any questions? Great, that concludes the hearing, because we didn't have any other public testimony. We're good. This concludes the hearing on Council Bill 25-007. We're in recess, and we will vote these last two bills at a later date. Thank you.